Victor? Me, Bear, Shelley.
Stacy.
Bobby.
Ryan.
Thank you, Bob.
We know we can lean down a quarter and it's good.
Yeah.
There's another one, but I need this right now. She wrote on it. She did, she did. They put a new battery in our clock and it's still fast, but it is five o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
I noticed that was moved.
I know, I looked up there and it was gone and I thought, "We don't have a clock, we don't have a clock," and then low and behold, it's right above Nicolette, so everyone will see it. Right. We'll begin this meeting with an invocation. Jeremy Baird, would you please lead us on our invocation and then we'll have the pledge? Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity and the freedoms that we have as citizens of this great country. We're grateful for the good state in which we live and we're grateful for the, this city that we can be a part of. We're grateful for the public servants and those who sit on the city council and serve us as, as members of the community. Would thou please be with them that they can do the job and task that is theirs, that they will be able to, be able to lead the community in directions that are pleasing unto thee? Would thou be with them tonight that as they have their meeting and as members of the community participate as well, that thy Spirit can be with us all, that good decisions can be made, that clarity can come, and that correct efforts can be made to make this community better and stronger and always improving in ways that again are pleasing unto thee? We are grateful for the many blessings we have and we pray that we can look for ways to serve others. Again, please be with us now as we begin this meeting and with the members of the city council, that they can be inspired and led and guided by thee, and we ask for this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeremy. Would you now drum in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have three presentations this evening. The first is the beautiful business property of the month, and if Alicia Hoball will come forward, we'll take care of this first. I'm gonna move down here in front. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Our communication committee chose Cracker Barrel this month. Here's a beautiful, beautiful picture. Now, you're aware that, I guess this thing said, "Do you start over here," and she said, "I'm gonna get you another one." But Cracker Barrel's a great place to eat breakfast. My grandkids love it. And it's just beautiful what that landscape looks like. If you haven't seen it, go by there and look.
Thank you. Over here, please.
We have two proclamations this evening. The first is 2018 Alzheimer's Association Walk to End Alzheimer's Day. Who's gonna come up here besides Gail? Come on, Kevin, you too.
I wanna know how come she has a shirt that says "Grand Champions," but you don't.
You had to bring that, didn't you, Ryan? Maybe she walked far. Yeah, she probably could.
Anyway, proclamation reads, "Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and the only cause of death among the top ten in the country that cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed. And whereas Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia are a public health crisis causing hardship and heartbreak to a great many people, families, caregivers, and communities, including the city of Cape Girardeau and the southeast Missouri area, and whereas over five million Americans, two-thirds of whom are women, are now living with Alzheimer's disease with one additional person diagnosed every sixty-five seconds. And whereas in 2018, Alzheimer's and other dementias will cost the nation $277 billion, which is expected to rise as high as $1.1 trillion by 2050. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is a world leader in Alzheimer's care, support, and research, through whose efforts diagnostic tools are becoming more accurate, treatments more effective, and the cure more promising. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is encouraging our residents to participate in the 2018 Walk to End Alzheimer's, will be held on Saturday, September fifteenth at nine a.m. at Cape County Park North by starting a team, joining a team, volunteering or donating at www.alls.org/saintbus. And whereas the city council of Cape Girardeau wishes to show support for the goals and work of the Alzheimer's Association by encouraging learning about Alzheimer's and taking action in Alzheimer's, now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Box, Mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September fifteenth, as National, as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day." You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody wanna say anything after the picture?
You gotta look over there.
We're taking the picture?
There you go.
Right here, please.
I would just like to say on behalf of the, I'm a member of the Alzheimer's Walk Committee, so on behalf of the committee and all of the people who have dealt with Alzheimer's and their family or friends, thank you for your support, we appreciate it, and we would welcome anybody and everybody to come walk to show your support. Last year we had over five hundred people and we're hoping to beat that this year. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I have one more proclamation. It's National Preparedness Month. Mr. Watkins?
Chief Innis.
Anybody else?
Whereas National Preparedness Month, the theme "The Disaster Captain Prepared Now Learn How" creates an important opportunity for all residents to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities during any type of emergency, including natural disasters, potential terrorist attacks, and whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities, due to fatalities, economic devastation in the community and in our nation. And whereas the federal emergency management agencies, Ready Campaign, Citizens Corps, City of Cape Girardeau, numerous other agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies, to educate individuals on how to take action. Whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness priority, work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all citizens of Cape Girardeau are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities, such as our Community Emergency Response Team search program, ask to visit websites of the Ready Campaign, ready.gov, to educate themselves and take more active roles in their communities, become more prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Box, Mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau, do hereby declare September 2018 as National Preparedness Month.
That old principle, I know you have lots of names.
Well, the only comment I have is, if individuals are not prepared, the community is not prepared. So it's up to, the city does a good job in getting prepared as what they can for other things, but it's up to us as individuals. And our next class starts in two weeks.
Holy cow. Well, now move to communications and reports. Victor?
Once again, I remind everybody of the seniors and loving-together Senior Information Day that will be day after tomorrow. That's Thursday at the Eagles Club on Spring Street, and the door's open at nine a.m. for the seniors who are there. There's a free lunch. There'll be presentations by the Secretary of State's office and by Cape County Sheriff's Office on active shooter awareness. So there's good information, there'll be a lot of vendors there, and I encourage the community to, seniors to show up and enjoy the activities.
Anybody else? Nobody else? Holy cow. Usually everybody's just got all sorts of stuff going on. Since the last meeting, I met with Lindsay Grojan and gave a monthly update on KRCU, which some of you may have heard on the radio. We had a magnet meeting this week. I was really encouraged by the Sky West announcement that they're going to three flights a day beginning in January, and we're changing our destination from Quincy up to Paducah up. And I think three flights a day will really make it much more convenient for people to make connections, and from the business flyers I talked to, they were really happy to have that extra flight a day, so that's a big deal. Thanks, Bruce. We've got a big ribbon cutting tomorrow at eleven-thirty. Sloan Creek Bridge is open. We opened it last, the end of last week, so it'll be open this weekend. I'm sure Main Street residents appreciated that, and Red Star residents appreciated that, that makes it a lot easier to get around, and it's a beautiful new bridge. I'll be in Kansas City after that Wednesday and Thursday on a mayor's panel at the Governor's Conference on Workforce, talking about attracting and retaining talent. There are, I think, three other mayors around the state on that council, and I didn't know why I was asked, and I found out that Cape Girardeau in 2017 had, was the, was third in the state in jobs created behind Kansas City and Springfield, so maybe they wanna know what we're doing down here to, to create jobs, so I got elected, so to speak. I get to do some art jurying on Friday and attend the reception for the Arts Council, and I told them, I said, "I'm not an artist by any means, and I'm sure no expert on art," and, and they wanted me to do it anyway, so no telling what you're gonna find at that reception. Before our next meeting on the twentieth, we, the MML Annual Meeting is in Branson from the sixteenth to the eighteenth. I'll be there for most of that meeting, and then I head to Davenport, Iowa for the MRCTI meeting up there, and then fly back down. Well, I'm not flying, I'll just drive. Don't have to drive, I can drive fast, but I'm not driving in Cape Girardeau. For Constitution Day at Amish Roder on the twentieth, then we have a board, or next council meeting on that evening on the twentieth, which is a Thursday night, so that's always a little unusual, it's the only council meeting I've ever had on a Thursday. Next week, we have our aquatics committee meeting a couple of times to interview consultants, and I think that's a big step in, in getting that process going and educating the public and getting community input, so it's, you're doing a wonderful job of running those meetings and getting us on track and keeping us on track, so we appreciate that. Can't think of anything else. Scott?
Just a couple of things. The Spring Street Bridge project that was completed, I believe it was last year, with sinkholes and everything, has gotten the attention of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and they've given an award that will be handed out. I think Stan Polovic and Casey Brunkie are gonna go and, and receive that for, for the city, and we appreciate that. That is quite a, a engineering feat and, and accomplishment, so it's a gaining attention throughout the entire state, so congratulations on that. Did have the, I was asked, some folks asked about the RFP for the airport. We did receive a, for tea hangers, we did receive a, one responsive request. We got another one, but it was not responsive, it was late, so we are meeting with them and talking with them about their, their proposal. Purpose-built communities, we're meeting, I believe, with the school next week on Tuesday, and then their annual conference is in October, so we're preparing for that. And then, last thing I have is, several council members had asked about a tour of the Common Police Courthouse, and I talked to Charlie Herbst today, and he said that would work at about four-thirty in the afternoon. If anyone is interested, any dates in the next couple of weeks would work for you. I am available, I don't have to go, but I'm available Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week, and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of next week. Any takers?
This week would work better for me, Scott.
All right. And we don't, and then-
I'm gonna be out of town next week.
Well, and we don't have to do it all one thing, we could do it on a couple of different times, that'd be good.
I could do Friday at four-thirty, this Friday.
Friday at four-thirty? You got one ticker?
I could do that.
Ryan?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
I'm in.
You're in? All right. Friday at four-thirty, we'll-
I'll be in if I can get done with what I've scheduled to do already.
Okay.
I'll be in if we're done, but we want it to be there long, won't we?
No, I don't think so. It can't last real long.
Well, the Arts Council reception starts at five, and that, yeah, I'll, I'll work that in. It'd be nice.
We can be there a little early, too. We'll just meet over there at Friday at four-fifteen.
Four-fifteen.
Yeah. If you don't get there at four-thirty, we'll catch you, too. It's a small place.
Yeah. Lower Mer Street side. We're gonna have to walk up that hill. There's more parking, right?
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Good, good, good. We'll move to items for discussion. Part of what we wanted to do this year with our study session was look at our different goals in the city, and we have a goal to improve the safety, health of employees in the community, and we're gonna have that presentation tonight.
Yes, we have, it kinda started last week because we had the police report last week with the data, and so that, that of course is part of health and safety, and, and so tonight we were gonna hit on emergency preparedness and emergency wellness. Our chief, fire chief, Rick Innis, will do the emergency preparedness first.
Hey, very appropriate tonight as an emergency preparedness night. Emergency preparedness, as you know, goes beyond typical city operations. We can function, we can, we handle emergencies all the time. Police Department does, Fire Department does, Public Works does, everybody's involved in their own emergencies. We have mutual aid planned around with our, with the surrounding communities that we operate with on, on a daily basis. In fact, just this weekend, we had emergencies to deal with, we had mutual aid that we, we shared, we went out of the city to help in Scott County, we had mutual aid in, so that stuff goes on on a daily basis. What emergency preparedness is for, is for those emergencies, disasters that would occur that would go beyond our ability to handle things within our own city, with our, within our own departments individually, or, or beyond normal mutual aid procedures. So we've always had an emergency operations plan. The city has a, a great history, going back into the nineteen-nineties of emergency preparedness. Some of our senior employees, Gail Conrad, Mark Hashider, and some others were very involved in, in Project Impact. There was a federal program that, that brought some grant funding to the city to plan or initiate emergency management planning, and that was done, and that's kind of the plan we've been operating under for, for decades since the nineteen-nineties. But there's been some changes at FEMA. The, the old plan used to be based on just the National Incident Management System, or NIMS, which you all have heard, at least heard that acronym before, and it was planned on four functional areas. We about two years ago sent in two different rounds, a group of department heads, including Mr. Meyer, went the first time, went over to the Emergency Management Institute in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and went through a emergency management preparedness course. It was kind of an update, and we learned that FEMA was changing to what they call an ESF, or Emergency Services Functions Plan, which basically breaks down all the emergency, potential emergency areas into fifteen functional areas. And each area has its own plan, it's called an annex, so it was, and it was basically an expanded version of the emergency plan we've had. Since then, we have been working through staff to shift to the new FEMA emergency plan based on this essential function, ESF format. We've, we've divided up to fifteen essential functions, made assignments to, to various people, obviously, you know, fire, EMS, hazmat to the fire department, safety and security, and traffic flow to the police department, just for some examples. And obviously, if we were ever to, to get into a situation where the city manager would, and it's in the plan that the city manager would declare an emergency for the city of Cape Girardeau, we would, we would basically stop or suspend normal operations and go into this emergency plan where all city employees then become responsible for their ESF annex. So basically, we've been working for the last two years just to make that transition, that plan, and as you can imagine, we have, we have a committee and we have several people working on different annexes. We finally got, we had the goal of getting it together and ready by the fourth quarter of this year, under our, our goals of safety and security for the community. We have achieved that, we finally got it, all the annexes done and proofread and reread and, and everything done. We're, we're putting the final touches on that, so then the final quarter of this year, we're gonna roll that out to the employees, and we're making a goal in 2019 to either start another rotation of employees because we have new, new department heads, to either go to the Emergency Management Institute, or there's the possibility of bringing that they would send instructors here so we could actually all work together. Even when we went a couple of years ago, we went to two different groups, and it was good, but not as, not as great as if the instructors come here and we actually do the training with them here all at one time. Some other changes that we're gonna make in the upcoming year, the emergency management responsibility has always, well, was with in-city hall for a while, and then it went under the fire department, Assistant Fire Chief Mark Hashider's been the Emergency Management Coordinator for several years, and we're, we're kinda making a change there. He was focused on emergency management, nobody else really was, even within the fire department, so with, with the changes coming in the fire department, we're going to make the, the next fire chief a fire chief slash emergency management director, and we'll be seeking somebody that's got background in that as well as, as running a fire department. So I think that's gonna be a very positive change as well for the city.
Explain our emergency levels, the green, yellow, orange, red?
There are, there are four emergency levels, and actually Roger Fields came up with this in our, in one of our original committee plans, keeping it simple as Roger always liked to do, and it was based off of the, kind of the threat levels at the national, at the national level, but we have green, yellow, orange, and red. Green being normal operations, we're, we're just within normal operations. If we go to a condition yellow, that just puts all the department heads kind of on notice. We monitor, for example, if we have bad weather moving in, if we have a special event planned, the, the department heads will just monitor the situation, we would have conference calls, possibly set up a meeting if necessary, and just make sure that we're all on the same page. But we don't open up the Emergency Operations Center, we don't do anything as far as physically getting together. If we go to a condition orange, that's when we would open up, have a limited opening of the Emergency Operations Center. We would pull in the department heads that were affected or have departments operating based on that particular emergency. We were in the, at the orange level in the last flooding event that we had, it wasn't a full-blown emergency, but public works and police and fire, development services were involved. And then if we go to a condition red, that is a full-blown catastrophic emergency in the city where we would have a full activation of the Emergency Operations Center and a declared emergency by the city manager. And Nicolette one time proposed a, a condition brown, which you can imagine what that is. That was above and beyond condition red.
You wanna explain that, Nicolette? Do you ever, do you ever have drills?
We do have occasional drills, and again, in, in years past, we always had to plan for drills and so forth. One of the things we learned and picked up with the, at the Emergency Management Institute was instead of planning out specific drills, is to use that, that the, your ESF programs at planned events, because a planned event, one, usually needs the coordination of several departments, several entities, agencies to pull it off. Two, any special event can turn into an emergency. Again, example, if weather hit the airshow, now you have a catastrophic problem, so you wanna plan for that as a contingent to any event planning. And then you can set up the, the command structure and actually run that event with the same command structure as you would an emergency. So we've done that with the airshows. We've, we've talked about doing it with the SEMO Fair, but we have not gotten to that point yet because there are so many different agencies that are involved there. The Eclipse that we did last year, we turned into an event and had a limited activation of the EOC, so, so we use those events as training as well.
Okay, that's probably good.
Does the committee that's working on updating plans-
Does that, does that group do any type of periodic tabletop exercises to-
We've not yet, because again, we've been concentrating on just updating the plan, but we-
But that would be in the plan.
We, we've been meeting once a month and, and there for a while, it got kinda sporadic, and, and you know how things go, sometimes everybody got back into their, because again, everybody has their normal functions, and the emergency plan is, is in addition to. So we kinda lost focus there for a-
Do you ever, do you ever have drills?
We do have occasional drills. And again, in, in years past, we always had to plan for drills and so forth. One of the things we learned and picked up with the, at the Emergency Management Institute was instead of planning out specific drills, just to use that, that the, your ESF programs at planned events. Because a planned event, one, usually needs the coordination of several departments, several entities, agencies to pull it off. Two, any special event can turn into an emergency. Again, example, if weather hit the airshow, now you have a catastrophic problem. So you want to plan for that as a contingent to any event planning. And then you can set up the, the command structure and actually run that event with the same command structure as you would an emergency. So we've done that with the airshows. We've, we've talked about doing it with the SEMO Fair, but we have not gotten to that point yet because there are so many different agencies that are involved there. The Eclipse that we did last year, we turned into an event and had a limited activation of the EOC. So, so we use those events as training as well.
Okay, that's probably good.
Does the committee that's working on updating plans?
Does that, does that group do any type of periodic tabletop exercises?
We've not yet because again, we've been concentrating on just updating the plan.
But that would be in the plan.
We, we've been meeting once a month and, and there for a while. It got kind of sporadic and, and you know how things go. Sometimes everybody got back into their, because again, everybody has their normal functions and the emergency plan is, is in addition to. So we kind of lost focus there for a little while because everybody was busy doing everything else that they normally have to do. So we kind of regained focus here this summer and we meet once a month as that, as that team again, got the momentum going back, got the plan finished. Another thing we're doing, we, we just created our last meeting, a subcommittee on IT to review our IT needs to support the new plan. And then again, I'm sorry, so in 2019, now that we got the plan finished, 2019 will be focused on training.
Now, that plan, that also includes some continuity of operations and things like in the event of a major disaster.
Yes. And when I say earlier that we suspend normal operations, it doesn't mean that we just shut down city government. Because that is part of the plan. We, we have to still function on some of the essential things that we need to do on our day-to-day operation.
Yeah.
The emphasis is obviously shift over to dealing with the emergency.
Yeah. And I mean, I, part of the reason I ask that is I know when we, at my company, do disaster planning, part of that is continuity of operations. What if the building that I'm working in and all of our administrative staff are working in gets blown away by a tornado? Is there a, a plan in place for continuity of basically government or operations?
And that is one of the ESFs. In fact, it's one that we, that we've kind of put off. We wanted to get the other 14 annexes up and running. And then the other one is continuity and mitigation of then making, taking the lessons you learn and making sure that you, you make improvements for the next time.
Thanks. Any other questions, Chief?
I have to mind, how far out are we from planning a Joplin-style tornado as part of the planning process?
I would say that'd be a, a little far off because again, now that we've got the plan updated, you know, the initial is just to get the plan out so our employees could see it. We would start again, either looking into sending, sending people over to the EMI or bringing the EMI in and doing some, some training there and also using some events and building ourselves up to a Joplin-style drill.
Anything else?
And, and once we get the, the hard copy, obviously you all will get, get a version of that. And we'll run some training for the council on their role in, in disasters.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Our next part of the presentation is on employee wellness. This is Lori Meyer and Julia Jones, and they're part of employee wellness. Lori?
Thank you. Now we're kind of triple teaming you.
All right, thank you.
Again, I'm Lori Meyer, I'm in Human Resources, Risk Management for the City. And myself along with Christine Jaggers, who is the Fitness and Wellness Specialist, is just kind of going to share some information that we have in regards to employee wellness programs, strategies. Before Christine steps up to kind of go over the PowerPoint that I know is in your agenda packet, I kind of wanted to give a little bit of a background and some key areas just to touch on a little bit. And one, one area is that we continue to offer a HSA or a Health Savings Account option for our employees on, in, for our employee independent healthcare through Anthem, Spook Cross, Spook Shield. And this option allows employees to have a little bit more of an active role in managing their own healthcare and also controlling their own costs, their own out-of-pocket costs. So that's all a good thing. We currently have about 101, 101 active members choosing that option right now. Another area is Employee Assistance Program, which our current provider is Personal Assistance Services. And this is a confidential service available to our full-time employees. Right now, our current usage is about 6.7%. And our PAS uses an industry sector standard of about 7.9% just to kind of gauge, is this a healthy percentage? Does it look about right? And of course, we work closely with them. And the different types of usages can be anywhere from marital, marital and family issues, individual emotional health. There can be incidents with grief and loss. And then anything to like financial wellbeing, just to name a few. And those are some of the kind of higher areas that we see usage in. And of course, it's a confidential service. I don't see names, but we do get a report on how much it's being used and kind of what areas it's, it's being used for. Just so if we can focus any internal efforts in there, we like to do that. Another key area is we're getting ready to hold our Ninth Annual Employee Health Fair. And this event, again, will offer Anthems Know Your Number and their employee health assessments. And the employees come in and they're able to get their, their high blood pressure or their blood pressure reading, some cholesterol testing and those type of things. And the good thing is it offers immediate response. The nurses there can identify, they work with the employee, kind of guide them on where their numbers are, what it means, what they can do to improve them. And then of course, if they see something that's more serious, they're going to, they're going to encourage them to seek medical attention or see their physician as soon as possible. So that's all a good thing as well. And we've been able to maintain about a 55% participation rate with the Know Your Numbers actual health assessment. And then with the health fair, we have actually got attendees, employees to attend that, that fair with our vendors, which is our medical partners of a variety, local and some that are also from out of town. And we've been able to get that as high as like 65% attendance among employees. So a broker tells those, tells us those are pretty good. When you look at the industry, a lot of places don't really get that much participation. But we've, we've been fairly, been doing a good job of maintaining that. We also are look at, we're looking at some strategies to, and a proposal to kind of look at changing some things up starting next year and going forward. So there's more to come on that. In the meantime, I wanted to also lastly focus on what we did about five years ago. And that was we implemented Christine's position in a fitness and wellness role. And she spends about half of her time reporting to Julia and Penny with citizen and community fitness programs and strategies. And the other half of the time she spends with employee internal wellness programs, which is what your PowerPoint that you saw is pretty much concentrated on. So I have to say, I've never, I can safely say that I've never met anybody that can surpass her passion for helping others and the be healthy, the be healthy, I guess, attitude. And, and she lives it every day. She truly lives her passion every day. And she is a certified personal trainer. She's a certified group fitness instructor. She's a fitness nutrition specialist. She has her certificate in training in adult weight management. She's a Silver Sneakers instructor. And she's a Fire Department peer fitness trainer. She, we're lucky she stayed here. She's a graduate of Southeast Missouri State University with her undergrad and also her masters in nutrition and exercise services. So we're lucky to have her. With that, I'm going to turn it over to her unless anybody has any questions.
We have had, in the, in the last few years, after she started, the last year, we have seen a declining use of our health insurance, which is, is the outcome that we were looking for in investing in this position. So I think it's, it's good to report that it's not only those high participation rates, but it's actually had a positive return on our experience.
Yes. And I hate to jinx this, but our claims renewal, our claims history with Anthem this past year, which we're getting ready to go into renewal for 2019, is looking really good. I met with the broker and our Anthem rep last week. And we know these things. It's hard to gauge or estimate a percentage of how that impacts it, but we know that it does impact it when we're working with our employees on a regular basis. So. All right.
Thanks, Lori.
Do you want to go over the PowerPoint? Christine brought a little handout and goodie for you. I'm going to pass that out when she starts.
Oh, I don't know if there's much left to say, but thank you guys for having me. I don't know if you want to.
You're in charge.
We'll switch on the side. I'm sorry. It might be off.
As long as she doesn't want to start doing jumping jacks.
Yeah, I don't know. We might just have to resort to that. I don't know. Get it going. She could do that. There you go.
There we go. Okay. So as I mentioned, guys, my position is, I must say, one of the best jobs around here. I have, I get to work with community as well as employee wellness, which we talked a little bit about. Like I said, I get to do not all the employee health fairs, but the community health fairs. I get to work with a wide variety of people as well as, of course, for the whole city. So great position, love it. We had tons of fun, which we'll be going through some of that. And as you guys will see, some of the examples that we're handing out. So on the program I created, I call Fit for Life. And basically, it's a well-rounded program to hit everyone in different areas of their interests. Everyone is, you know, excited about different things and different health and wellness. So I try to hit a little bit of everything. It's completely free for the employees and we have perks for the family members because we know a lot of times they're on our insurance and they can help increase the claims. So we try to focus on them as well. I go through, not only try to hit people with Facebook and email, websites, newsletters, all the different variety of things, as well as the health fair. And I also tie in PaaS, which is our assistant program, as well as Anthem 360, your insurance. So I try to basically bring it all together in one big program called Fit for Life. With that, I'll use a wellness passport. Again, it's completely optional for all the employees, but it's a little book that helps organize everything. So we go to this doctor, we go to that doctor, we see this person. Basically, it's a way to put everything together. So it's not so confusing. And with that, we also use this wellness tracker. It's our first year for doing this, but it's a great way. There's so many ways to track steps and activity these days from your phone, your dominos, your, you know, your Fitbits. It ties it all into one. And that way, we can do challenges with everybody. So whether it's just moving throughout the day to getting up and walking before work, after work, whatever fits their lifestyle is honorable. And of course, it's all completely confidential. Some of the employee wellness perks we focus on, of course, tobacco sensations, a big program we try to hit on. One-on-one wellness consultations. And that works not only through Wellness Wednesday, what we'll be talking about next. We have monthly luncheon learns, wide variety of educational information, and then pop-up events that you'll see. Wellness Wednesdays event I started about four years ago. And basically what I'll do is I'll go to the different buildings and go directly to them to offer blood pressure screenings. I can do wellness assessments, nutrition consults, whatever interests that person. If they don't want to get their weight checked, that's fine. You know, if they don't want to see me that month, that's fine. But it's a way to keep confidential, one-on-one, you know, to see, I've been seeing you for four years. Okay, your weight's increased. So your blood pressure's increasing. What can we do? Or what's going on? Your doctor told you this and you don't understand what that means. I'm there to help, you know, break up that confusion for them. And like I said, I rotate through all the buildings once a month. That way to hit everyone at their convenience. Or if it doesn't work for them, they can come to me in my office. And then I also offer blood pressure tracking as well as talking about the insurance. I know sometimes it can be confusing. Should I go to the emergency room? Should I call in? Is this, you know, what steps do I need to take? And I'm kind of there to help them make their next step. As you talked about, an employee health fair is going to come up and let's see, next, next month. So again, we'll go over different blood pressure, cholesterol. We do fitness assessments if they would like. And of course, the flu shot's a big one that we offer there as well. Snack, right? This is a program I started a couple of years ago as well. And what I'll do is I'll offer healthy snacks to the different buildings. And I just spend a little bit and we use the honor system for them to pay. You know, we just try to charge to break even on that. But that way, they're not having to run to fast food if they get hungry throughout the day or go to that vending machine if they don't have healthy options. So it's just another way to help them out. Of course, our monthly wellness challenges, we offer blast with that. And that can be anything from moving to our de-stress activities to involving each other there. So everyone, let's all get together on lunch and walk together. Because that way, you can hold each other accountable. And different things, just to be active and have fun with it. So I'll go away there. Monthly seminars. So for instance, coming up next month, we have laughing yoga. So I always try to do something fun and different for them to help keep them excited, but yet still learning. Last month, we did one about how to find the right shoes. So we use Missouri Medical Company to come out. Just whatever interests or sparks the interest to keep them going and keep them interested in learning on how to be healthy, you know, some basic steps. And of course, we do a lot on lower back safety and injury prevention and things like that, that we do see common in the workplace. We love our pop-up events. That's something that they may not be scheduled, but hey, next month, come out, we're going to do De-Stress Fridays. That was the most popular one, I must say. You know, free back massage. Who doesn't love that? So something to help break up their day, 12 Days of Christmas. So each day, they had something fun, interesting, new challenge that they had to do. Walking challenges, walking groups, that always was a popular one. Biggest Loser, we actually saw a big success in that. They lost a lot of weight. So different things to keep them interested, like we mentioned. Corporate Games, that's actually coming up very soon. And I'm the team captain on that. And that's just a way to get the community together and get the employees active together. And they can bring the family out and just get moving and have fun, create that, you know, community inside of the business place. And then of course, we always have fun incentives. So finding ways to, you know, get them excited. So whether it be they just want, you know, a little poster board on the wall or whatever it may be to get them moving, get them active, excited. Another fun thing we do with this is our, in a resource box. So it has different CDs or different workout, different books, things like that, all at one spot. So they can come check it out at the library. And they can bring stuff that they, they don't like that DVD, the workout DVD. So they can try out something different. And again, no charge on that. A Health and Wellness Expo, this is coming up in January. So this will be my fourth year doing Health and Wellness Expo. We started pretty small. I didn't know what to expect. If something new I tried out, I had about 50 vendors. And now it's over 100 with a waiting list. So it's really grown. Of course, it's open to the community as well. But we have cooking demos. We have all sorts of vendors you can think of, childcare, educational seminars. We really try to keep it interesting, keep it fun for the community and the employees as well. Special events, Francis National Running Day, Bike to Work in School Day, Halloween Zumba, you know, CPR, IV. So always different fun things coming up. And then of course, different things to keep them motivated, like we talked about. And like I mentioned, our overall goal is just to keep employees active, get them moving and enjoy being active, getting reminded and why it's so important. And as well as decreasing their claims and being careful with when they need to go to the ER, if they need it or not. So we're going through that.
You keep busy.
Any questions? I know I went through that fast. But what I gave you guys goes through a little bit of some of the handles that we do, helps break it down. So I know I was going to kind of go fast to keep it moving. But that's one good.
All right. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, guys.
It's great. It's great for the employees and great for the community.
Absolutely. I think we've seen a, just a steady rise in your participation among employees. It just takes a while for people to accept and trust and think it's okay to, to do more healthy things. So she's making an impact and.
So this newsletter she puts out every month too?
Yeah, every question, new things are popping up.
It's great.
Yeah, she has something on almost every regular city scuffle thing. It's not quite weekly, but pretty much every weekly.
Keeping it fresh, keeping what you're doing fresh so that.
Yes, another thing too, you see that, we actually offer different, if anyone needs a lactation room, we have that now available at every building.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. We move on.
Yeah, I will, next, next meeting, we will follow up, it'll be our last meeting where we're talking about this specific goal. What I will provide next meeting is our strategic plan for this goal. Shows each department and what each department's doing in this goal. Give you a chance to review through that. See if you see things that we ought to do more of, things we ought to do less of. Get your input on that regarding next time. So that'll be this one. All right.
Thank you. We'll move on. Are there any appearances tonight for items that are not on the agenda? If not, we'll move through the agenda review. And before we get to the agenda review, I want to make a, a simple little editorial change. On bill number 18-128, the resolution says November 8th, and it is November 6th. And I went back and checked that. And I went back and checked that with Gail. The resolution itself that I signed said November 6th. This was just in the very top part. So, I just figured we could do that editorially, and that'd be very simple. Okay? All right. Agenda review.
Thank you. We do have one public hearing tonight. Dispatching of some of the other things we have a public hearing tonight regarding proposed amendment to chapter 30 of our city ordinances regarding definitions. So, I was going to have Ryan, if you could, to kind of go through the definitions that will be changed as a result of that. Yes. Just jump, just run on right now.
This originated as a, an issue that came to our attention regarding a screen printing business that is currently in our CBD downtown, but they're looking to relocate to a C2 zone property out on Kings Highway. And in looking at our definitions, that particular business fell under the definition of light manufacturing industrial facility, which is not a permitted use in the C2 district. So, that prompted a discussion among the staff about, you know, those type of uses. And, you know, we determined that really is appropriate in that type of district. So, that's kind of where it all started, is we started looking at both the definition for light and heavy manufacturing industrial uses. And then, of course, while we're looking at amending this section, we look for other opportunities to make changes. There's several changes that have been needed for some time, you know, definitions that we use on a regular basis as far as our internal discussions and even in discussing with the public when they come in for permits or for plane review. You know, we talk a lot about setbacks and yard, lot line. And there's typically a lot of confusion as to what those are. And, you know, if we have definitions that we can point to, it makes it easier for the developer or the property owner to understand them. So, in a nutshell, that's really kind of the bulk of the changes, is making the changes to those two definitions to make them broader in their scope so that it doesn't include businesses that do printing and packaging and things like that, really tailors them to focus more on the manufacturing aspect. And then adding all these other definitions and making clarifications for things pertaining to lots and yards and setbacks and things like that.
Looks like a lot of good common sense changes.
Yeah, this, it's been through several iterations. So, we're trying to make the language as plain as possible and, you know, prevent any loopholes.
All right. Thanks. Any questions, Ryan?
Thank you, Ryan.
We have on the consent agenda, items three through nine are the second and third readings of last, last meeting's ordinances. The first one is regarding conflicts of interest. This is one we have to pass every, every few years according to state statute. Then we have the no parking along Clark Avenue. Number five is the promotion, fund, funding of promotions for the scheduled air service. Number six, special warranty deed from Mason Investments to, to convey that property. Number seven is a record plat, the Shelly Grounds. Number eight is a record plat that crossing at Harper Road. And then, number nine is the vacating ordinance, our interest along some property lines in Coyote Creek. So, those are from last time. Number 10 is the license and indemnity agreement to allow university to put up shuttle stop signs along their routes. Number 11 is another license and indemnity agreement for the paving of our road connection to their parking lot at the Fellowship Baptist Church. Number 12 is the resolution that asks voters to be informed themselves regarding proposition D and to get out and vote. Number 13 is a demolition contract for a couple of properties along South Sprig Street, way south there. And number 14 is some properties also for demolition on Ellis and Park and Hanover. Those are things that went through the condemnation process. Takes quite a while for that, those to happen. But those five properties have been through the whole process and now are ready for demolition. Once they're demoed, then we will come back and ask for council to tax bill those properties so that we can recoup those costs if they sell. Number 15 is from last me, last meeting regarding the sculpture for Ivor Square. And just says that we will accept it once it's been purchased, installed, and inspected. That we will expect, inspect it and maintain the sculpture. Number 16 is special obligation bonds. This is for PRS2 projects. Victor, you offhand what projects these cover?
I'm going to start with the home field goal. I'm going to have a gallery plus works.
There you go. Moving forward with those projects. Remember, if you remember, we didn't do a lot of bonding in PRS2. I think there is still potential, some more potential out there. But these, these are those early projects that we wanted to move forward with. And then 17 is accepting the public improvements at the crossings at Hopper Road. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, we have four new ordinances tonight. The first one is vacating the city's interest in unimproved Carruthers Avenue between Dunkland and New Madred. And 19 is a temporary construction easement from Ruth Lips for sanitary sewer repair. Accepting that, that easement. Number 20 is accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement and a permanent ingress egress from the Hudson and West Con Investments. And the same between Dunkland and New Madred. And then, number 21 is from the hearing. This is the first reading of the change to chapter 30 for those definitions. And then 22 will be an appointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I think you've tallied your preference.
We have. And we have a person here tonight. The man we're going to talk to first. So, we'll do that, we'll do that in a little bit.
And Don, here. Then we do have a closed session item tonight that we'll need to go on.
Okay.
That's review.
Thank you, thank you. We'll now go into regular session, and we'll have the roll call, please. Ryan Essex.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Stacy Kinder. Shelley Moore.
Dan Preston.
Well, at this point, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. As amended. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Motion approved. We do have a public hearing to consider proposed amendment to chapter 30 of the code ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding definitions, which Ryan alluded to. Is there anybody here this evening who speak on behalf of the public hearing? Anybody here about the public hearing? If not, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Are there any, any individuals here to make comments regarding items on the agenda this evening? Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Scott Charton. I'm the communications director for SaferMo.com, which is the campaign committee advocating for Missouri Proposition D on the November 6th ballot. Thank you for considering bill 18-128, which is a resolution urging Missourians to get educated about Prop D. I have a side in this, so as they're being educated, I want to make clear we're here to support Prop D. And we have a website, which happens to be the same name as our committee, SaferMo.com, where you can find information about Missouri Prop D. I will tell you that it's our opinion that this is badly needed in Missouri. It's been 22 years since the state increased the state motor fuels user tax. And during that time, our vehicle miles traveled in the state have gone up by 25 million miles a year. We've added 6,200 miles of lanes of highway in the state. And that 17 cents that went into effect in 1996 today has seven cents purchasing power. Now, MoDot has done a good job with this, but in fact, they're ranked ninth nationally by respected study and cost effectiveness, but clearly, we're falling behind. So, this is a proposal that would accelerate priorities in the state. You have a lot to do with your metropolitan and regional planning organizations with input to MoDot on what they do at the state level. Most importantly, for Cape Girardeau, you would benefit here greatly. The City of Cape Girardeau, in new annual recurring revenue under Prop D, with the local share from the state road fund, would be almost $600,000 a year, every year, new money. That's very significant. Cape Girardeau County's share would be about $576,000. The total, when you add up all the cities and counties in Cape Girardeau and its cities, is just over $1.4 million a year, new money every year. That is a sizable economic infusion into your community. So, we would urge folks to vote yes on Prop D. And we would encourage you to look at SaferMo.com. We have more information on there. I'd be glad to entertain any questions. Otherwise, thank you for encouraging Missourians to get informed and for folks in Cape Girardeau to get informed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Can you explain the tax itself, how it's phased in?
Yes, sir. It is a two and a half cents per year motor fuels user tax increase. It is phased in gradually over four years. The grand total is 10 cents after four years. Now, for Missouri, we rank 46th nationally in revenue per mile that we spend. And I will tell you that our neighboring state, your closest neighbor of Illinois, is several cents higher. And even after we implement this, I have Ken Folken on the Illinois side who comes to Missouri to buy their gasoline, our state tax will still be considerably less than Illinois, for example. So, this is something to put us into a position to accelerate priorities. It certainly would have an increase because statewide increase for local governments is about 66% from the state over the current amount that has received statewide. Very significant impact. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Anybody else for comments on items that are on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move into the consent agenda. Eric?
Number 18-115, in ordinance updating and re-adopting sections 2-76 to 2-83 of the city code relating to conflicts of interest. In ordinance updating and re-adopting sections 2-76 to 2-83 of the city code relating to conflicts of interest. Number 18-116, in ordinance making schedule F of section 26-247 of the city code by establishing no parking anytime along Portion of Clark Avenue in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance making schedule F of section 26-247 of the city code by establishing no parking anytime along Portion of Clark Avenue in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-117, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a state block grant agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to fund promotion of scheduled passenger air service at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. An ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a state block grant agreement with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to fund promotion of scheduled passenger air service at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Number 18-118, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Mason Investments LLC for property located at the southeast corner of Bloomfield Road and South Mountain Auburn Road in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Mason Investments LLC for property located at the southeast corner of Bloomfield Road and South Mountain Auburn Road in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-119, an ordinance proving record plat of Shelly Grounds subdivision. An ordinance proving record plat of Shelly Grounds subdivision. Number 18-120, an ordinance proving record plat of crossing at Hopper Road Commercial. An ordinance proving record plat of crossing at Hopper Road Commercial. Number 18-121, an ordinance vacating the city's interest in the northern 10 feet of a 20-foot wide utility and drainage easement along the south property line of lots 10, 11, 16, and 17 in Coyote Creek Estates in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance vacating the city's interest in the northern 10 feet of a 20-foot wide utility and drainage easement along the south property line of lots 10, 11, 16, and 17 in Coyote Creek Estates in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-123, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreement with Southeast Missouri State University for the installation of shuttle stop signs at the intersection of North Pacific Street and Normal Avenue in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-127, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreement with Fellowship Baptist Church of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for paving a gravel parking lot on 430 Coke Avenue in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-128, a resolution of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri informing city voters that Proposition D will be on the November 6th, 2018 statewide ballot. Bill number 18-129, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a demolition contract with Eagle Excavating LLC for the demolition of buildings at 2827 and 2829 South Sprig Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-130, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a demolition contract with Steve's Hauling and Excavating for the demolition of buildings at 529 South Ellis Street, 27 North Park Avenue, and 548 South Hanover Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-131, a resolution to accept a Roy Butler sculpture in Ivor Square upon purchase, installation, and inspection in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18-132, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale with special obligation bonds to the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri and engaging the services of Gilmore and Bell B.C. for disclosure compliant services.
That's consent agenda. entertain a motion? Motion by Dan, second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number dash, or 18-74. An ordinance vacating the city's interest in unimproved Carruthers Avenue right of way along between Dunkland Street to the south and New Madred Street to the north in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 18-124, an ordinance accepting a temporary construction easement from Ruth Lips for sanitary sewer main repair in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Dan, second by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 18-125, an ordinance accepting permanent sanitary sewer easements and permanent ingress and egress easements from Ann Ledbetter Hudson and West Con Investments LLC between Dunkland Street and New Madred Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. You want to second before we move? Motion by Dan, second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 18-126, an ordinance admitting chapter 30 of the code in the ordinance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding definitions.
Some moves.
Motion by Ryan, second by Robbie. He beat you. Any discussion? If not, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have one appointment tonight, and we have Ms. Ann Dohan here. Did you want to address the council about why you wanted to be on the Parks and Rec Board? Okay.
Hello. I was asked by Scott Williams to apply. And Danny and I have been married for 22 years here in Cape Girardeau. We just love the city. I came up here from Memphis, Tennessee, and played basketball for CMO and just fell in love with the town. So, we've really enjoyed over those 22 years, 22 years plus. I've known him for longer than that. But we've really enjoyed over the years, seeing all of the improvements and all of the additions, especially sportsplex and everything that's happened in the city. We've just been really excited about that. We've had our kids. We've got three children. We've got an 18-year-old that just started. He's a freshman at CMO, Dawson. And we have sophomore at Notre Dame. And we also have a sixth grader, 12-year-old, at St. Vincent's. And we're all sports all the time. So, we've, we've had him in city league sports. We've enjoyed that. We've coached. We've done everything we can to be a sports family. We just think that that's the best thing for our kids. And we love the life lessons that it teaches, propels them for their real life. And I just love sports. I love Cape Girardeau. And I think this would be a great fit for me to be on this committee and just real excited to get started. And Julie's going to fill me in on everything they're working on right now. So, I'm just real excited.
All right. Thank you. All right. That ap- That appointment, sitting, that tally is Ann Dohan. That's no surprise. We...
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All opposed? I mean, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Done deal. Is there any other business? I'm not aware of any. I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn, and then I will read the section about closed session.
Make the motion to adjourn the closed session.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The city council will hold a closed session, discuss legal actions, litigation, and confidential communication with legal counsel pursuant to revise mercurial section 610-021. Okay. We will adjourn to closed session. Thank you all for being here this evening. Ann, congratulations.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for informing me. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for reporting.